This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, so we are at six o'clock. Let me just get into my spot here so I can get this meeting started. And welcome everybody to the City Council Ordinance Committee meeting of March 3rd, 2022. Is 6:00 PM. We are still remote due to COVID-19 restrictions and the extension of the open meeting laws from Governor Charlie Baker. And so tonight, we will be looking at the vacant storefront ordinance. And I see that Gwynn is here. We've got some other people. So this is great. We do have some minutes to approve. Tom, I don't know if you were able to take a look at those minutes. I was.
I was.
Okay, great. So I'm happy to entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Anybody?
Yeah, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of February 17th.
A second back.
Okay, we have a motion the second to approve the minutes of February 17th. And we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Rothschild.
Yeah.
Counselor Peak.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. So we now have our minutes approved. We can send those over to Barbara. And as people kind of filter in here, what I'll do is I'll just, and I'll kind of, I'll give some opportunities as we go, but as far as public speak, if anybody has anything that they'd like to discuss that's not on the agenda tonight, and the agenda tonight, what we're going to be talking about is the vacant storefront ordinance. So if anybody has anything they want to talk about that is not the vacant storefront ordinance, now is your time. Okay.
Sorry, the new business as well?
Um, I think, I think tonight we'll probably just focus on the vacant storefront. Um, Barbara added the other things and I said it was fine, but I think our intention tonight was to try to dig into this as much as we could. And um, we'll, we'll look at the pay plan at a later date. We, just a reminder, we have a meeting next Tuesday. I believe it's the 8th, which is a continued public hearing with the planning board. So, um, okay, let's, let's start digging into this. So I, I think that Counselor Rothschild and Counselor Peak, you should have gotten the marked up one I sent you. And for those of you joining us, feel free to, you know, raise your hand if you have a question or a comment. And I think what we can do is just kind of recap, for those of you that weren't at the meeting where we discussed this, we did have basically just a couple of questions that we wanted to, to kind of bounce off some of the members of the EDIC and the people that had, you know, put in a lot of work into this. Not to try to stall or to try to, you know, prevent this from, from moving forward, but more to get some context and, and to, you know, see where, as, as the EDIC, if you had already discussed these things in the, the process that brought us to here. So I think one of the biggest issues that we had that we wanted to check in with you all was around the difference between a vacant storefront that might be temporarily vacant. For example, Coco, that's waiting for potentially a new restaurant to come in and is biding its time for the right tenant to get there versus a chronically vacant building. You know, like, I guess you could use hurry and scurry as an example, or maybe Moriarty Moriarty as an example. So I'm just wondering if you guys had discussed that at all? And, and maybe we can use that as a starting point.
Um, I see that Tom is here as well, but I will jump in and Tom, if you want to add to what I'm saying, feel free. Uh, we did talk about that. And I think it comes down to a demonstration of a good faith effort to try to find a tenant. And so there is a portion of this proposal, to be fair, I have not read it in the last month. But um, there's an element of it that relies on the idea of a registry of vacant space to have an understanding of the activity of the property owner, the landlord, whatever, to try to find a tenant. And the creation of a, at least communicative, if not also positive relationship between the landlord, property owner and the city. So that we can see that they are making a, a good faith effort to try to find a tenant. Tom, do you have more to say about that?
Uh, yeah, just, just back to your question a little bit too, Salem. You, you definitely hit on the points that we were looking at, which it, there, there's a couple of chronic vacancies in East Hampton. And chronic means years. And unfortunately, it might be law, it might be regulation, what have you, but we could not be selective with an ordinance like this. It has to encompass everyone. So that's why the letter went out to all property owners in the entire business district, because while there might not be a vacancy today, there could be one next week or next month. So we could not be selective and say, we're putting this in place to go after the chronic. It's, it's not meant to be punitive. It's not meant to be a moneymaker for the city. It's meant to be an incentive for these property owners to get off the dime and try to get their property rented. So the ones that are chronic use Coco as an example. I've used a couple of others where they might have a vacancy today and the day after the vacancy happens, they have a for rent sign in the building and they're working with a local Realtor and they're actively trying. To Gwynn's point, we would like them to register it as a vacant property, but we're not, we're not intending to beat them over the head with this. But the chronic ones who, some of our members have reached out to, who won't even reply to an email or a phone call. We're hoping that this will give them some incentive. I think when, if I recall, the presentation we had from the town of Arlington. When they started this process, they had 17 vacant storefronts. And after one year, they had five. So that's our goal. And I think our number is somewhere around 17, if I recall. So that's our goal is to, is to try to get the landlords to, or the property owners to pay attention and actively try to get their properties rented.
Great. Thanks for that, Tom. I see Counselor Peak, you have your hand up. Go for it.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I mean, so when we talk about, wouldn't there be some ways that we could sort of enforce it more heavily on certain chronic people just by, maybe like, for example, levying a heavier fine for properties that have been vacant for longer than a certain amount of time or that have been on the registry for a certain amount of time? Um, I mean, just, that's my question, but just before you respond, I, I just want to say like, the, because the, the one thing that I, I see about this is I see a big difference between someone who has a cool space and is trying to be selective about how they fill it. And okay, yeah. We'd like them to get registered. That's fine. But they're actively engaging in the process. And somebody who, like I said, is just totally unresponsive. And I think the, the big concern I have with the unresponsive people is that if you are for years or decades, having a property vacant and paying your property taxes on that property every year. Then I worry that the $100 rest annual registration fee is not going to be an adequate disincentive for such a property owner to alter their behavior. I guess that's, um, which is, I guess me saying, I like this. I just, there's these sort of edge cases that are kind of egregious. And I'm wondering if this is sort of stiff enough on, on, on those cases. And if there isn't something we can do there.
Yeah, okay. So Tom, that, that, and Lindsay, I see you. I'll, I'll get you in one second. That, I think is a really salient point. Um, and I'm wondering, you know, one of the ways that we could potentially address that, that would be fair across the board, because I know that, you know, Tom was mentioning, we don't want to be, you know, targeting certain things, but maybe for every annual registration fee, it compounds for every year that it's on the registry, you know, maybe it, there's a compounding fee the second year that it's still on the registry. You know, something like that where, you know, and after three years, it would be, you know, up to a, even a higher amount, you know, so we could look at like a a compounding fee year after year. So if people just stay on the registry, they will end up having to pay more every year. So that, that's a potential thought and, and I'll throw that out there and, and I'll let, um, you know, so digest that for a second and then Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say that too. When I was reading about other ones, and I'm sure your BDIC has done a lot of reading and I'm kind of late to the party. So sorry if I come in. Um, I, I do agree the $100 fine is not enough. And it would be nice to see incremental change every year. I'd also like, I don't know if this, I hear, did any of the chronically vacant people respond? Or were they all the non responders as well? To your reaching out.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't say you must get in touch with us. So I can't tell you any particular, nobody contacted me, for example. So I think there's the response that I got was mostly from people who know people who know those people. And why would they get in touch with you anyway? What do they care?
I guess I'd like a little bit more robust outreach before we like go forward with putting anything into law in terms of like, if we have 17 vacant places, to identify a reason why all of them are vacant. It seems a doable process to really understand what the reasons are, because they'll probably fall into different categories. And I've read other cities and how they categorize some. But to understand for our scenario, make sure that what we're doing is matching the reasons.
So I think you can, you can find that out. And also I'm not certain the extent to which you need to know that. Beyond knowing that they are, we know that there is nobody operating a business in there right now. I don't actually care why not. I do want to know, are you trying to find somebody to come and operate a business in there? Or are you preparing that space in order to do so? That's like the extent of why I need to know that reason. And honestly, it, it is about the communication part. Like, yes, I'm trying. I'm working with this person. It turns out that a lot of the people that are coming through are looking at the price of it and saying that that's steep. So now I'm trying to figure out, uh, is there a way that I can adjust the price or whatever? Maybe, um, that didn't really come up as, as a, as a topic that helped Arlington. And of course, we have an N of one where, where we are looking for an example of something that has worked and been effective. I like, this is now to a different point. I like the idea of a compounded rate over time. My understanding is that to levy a fee, it has to be tied to a city activity, that activity being an inspection on a quarterly basis. So if you can justify compounding that fee over time, sure, I don't know. Can you do that? I don't, what do I know? So those are interesting ideas.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Salem.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Um, I, I think Lindsay, what, when I refer to no response, um, and Salem had mentioned as an example, the Moriarty building. We know of people who have reached out to actually try to purchase the property and do something with it. And there's no response. So I wasn't referring to a response from our outreach. And, and I think again, you know, the city attorney might have to bless this before it all happens, but we're trying to be as uniform as possible across the board. So if we start getting into reasons why your property is vacant, another one isn't, I think we're going to get way too far into the weeds. And we have to be a little bit more, a little bit more generalistic here, if that's a word. As, in other words, we have to treat everyone equally here. So even if you're really, really trying to rent your property and not being successful, at some point you're going to hit a tripwire that's going to have a fee. I totally agree. This fee is not onerous. But I know how much business owners like fees and I'm hoping they react to any fee. And the fact that, you know, they're on this registry. If it's possible, Salem, for us to legally somehow compound this fee over time, but keep in mind, you might be compounding it on the good guys too.
Right.
Right. And I think
I think it's worth also saying that the, it came up multiple times in her presentation to us, to Tom's point about the idea of the fee being high or not. Some chronic offenders, we'll call them, were just offended by the idea of having a fee levied at all. They don't care that it's a hundred dollars. They're like, I have to pay you a hundred dollars four times a year. Hell no.
Okay, Lindsay, did you have something?
Well, I just, I know the new, New Bedford, for example, they do have a compounded fee. They charge 500 for one year, a thousand the next, 2,000 the next. So there are examples of it being done in other cities. Um, and I, and when I talk about the causes, it's not to say because we're going to have a different kind of penalty or it's not going to be uniform. But it's about coming up with resources. So like, for example, if someone's not finding, trying to find a tenant, it's vacant because another situation that they could use a business liaison or some kind of support and resources from the city to help, like if they really, if it's, they won't, they don't want intend for it to be vacant, could you support? And that might not be in our economy right now, but that might be something that happens in the future. So I just think it's more, we are a small town and it is easy to walk into John Moriarty's office and speak to him directly. And I know that that might be like more than we need to do, but I also think building relationships and goodwill and the will to do the right thing, that that part of relationship building is important and communication building is important.
That's true. That's a really useful point. Can I just weigh in with one more thought here, which is exactly on the topic of wanting to be supportive. It's not clear, I don't think, even in our proposal, what entity ends up being responsible for this relationship with business owners? Like, who do they go to? EDIC is a eager group of volunteers. I don't know about that. We don't have an economic development person in, who, who is solely tasked with that kind of role in city government. So it's, it's worth talking about as well. What entity is responsible for, for even making this go?
Right. Well, and Counselor Peak, one second, I would, um, I would say, you know, as far as the enforcement of this, it's the building commissioner all the way through. So, you know, that would be something that where we'd want to definitely involve the building commissioner to make sure that they're on board and, and that that connection, since that's going to be the enforcement agency, that, that's going to be, you know, where the rubber meets the road. So, um, Counselor Peak.
Okay, I have three questions, but I, I'll ask just one of them for now, um, so that other people get chances to do stuff. Um, and the first question I was going to ask is, I, um, when we had spoken about this, uh, someone saw the news article and was talking to me about it. What they sort of said is what's stopping a business owner from putting a desk and a chair in their vacant storefront and saying it's their office and that it's not vacant? I, I just, that was
We have a literal example of that on Main Street. We have the Von Amme, however you pronounce, Phonamme, I care place that looks active, but definitely is not. Um, and that, that's like a different thing. I don't actually care if the property owner themselves is making money. I care about whether the storefront looks like anything is happening there. Do I want an entire street full of however you say that I care? No, I don't. But, um, the idea is that it doesn't look abandoned or perpetually under construction.
So we could have Who knows? Uh, so Counselor Peak, is that, I mean, I think to your point, um, you know, we might, that could be within our definitions of, you know, defining what is an active storefront and, and what meet, setting criteria that would have to be met. You know, stylistically, uh, you know, and maybe within a certain range of operating hours or something, we could, we could probably define that so it is clear. So it's not such a gray area, but I think that's a good point. And continue, Counselor Peak.
Sure. Um, the second thought, one thing that we had talked about, and I just wanted to see what people thought about this, was the idea of putting a provision in here that would allow the city council to temporarily suspend this during like substantial economic crises where it probably was not realistic that anyone was opening, going to be opening new businesses in the next six months or whatever. And I just wanted to see what, uh, the EDIC folks thought about that idea.
I, I
Go ahead, Tom.
Personally, I don't think, um, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think when, when COVID hit, for example, um, and that's just one example, because we're living it. The city came up with a, with a whole host of tools in the tool chest, if you will, to try to help local businesses, you know, it might've been as little as expanding outdoor dining to some sort of tax relief or what have you. And I think this could be one more tool in the toolbox when those economic times hit. I would hope that, that if the, if the, not just the city, but if the region, if the country, if the world finds itself in some major economic downturn, that we would take a look at, at everything the city does when it hits the pocketbook of our businesses and look at possible relief. And this would be included in that package, Tom, in my opinion.
Hold on, once, hold on one second. Um, I just wanted to, to point out that within, um, section four, which is the annual registration fee failure to pay waiver section. Um, on section E of that is waivers requested on the basis of financial hardship, hardship. Uh, and I think, you know, one of the things, if we look at that, we could probably tweak that section a little bit to make it applicable to what you're talking about, Tom, or we could waive it. And I think instead it, it says it would be a reevaluate on a quarterly basis, but the fee is an annual fee. So I think what we would just say is, you know, um, in this, like a sentence, the city council reserves the right to waive this annual fee. You know, in that section, I think that that would be potentially where that would go. Just a thought. And, um, let me see, I saw Cassie, I saw you raise your hand. I don't know if you wanted to chime in here real quick, since you haven't got to talk yet. And don't worry, take your time to find that mute button. Sometimes you can press the space bar too. That works. There you go. We can hear you, I think.
Oh, I'm in. Oh, shoot. Um, so sorry for Zoom fatigue.
No worries.
I just, I did just want to point out that that language exists and it is currently written. So, yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
That was a lot of drama for us from my point.
Gwen.
I also want to, um, keep in mind that we have that, that statement in there about financial hardship and also this idea that activating the space can also be fulfilled by inviting art into that space. And you can decide that you want to put time limits on how, how long you're willing to look at that art or how frequently you expect the art to change or whatever. But it really is about, okay, let's, let's support you in trying to make a little money, a little rent off of this space. And also we would like to benefit from this looking a little less yuck and a little more fun and interesting. We want to encourage foot traffic, that sort of thing. So I think that that, um, that is a useful feature of this as well.
Right. Um, you know, one of the things that, as far as the art piece of it, I think, I know there was a couple of references to a citizen jury. Would the EDIC have any issues with us kind of delegating that responsibility to the ECA plus, um, you know, East Hampton? Just be, just because that is, a citizen jury is a little nebulous. It's not, so if we, you know, we'll have to make that a little bit more explicit. Um, and, and since we have that within our community, I think it makes sense to, to look towards that. But, um, okay.
Yeah, that was an idea floated by Casey Douglas. Yep.
Okay, great. Tom, Lindsay, do you have any other, um, pieces you want to discuss while we have our EDIC folks here?
Well, I'm not, I'm, it's probably on here, but you have one or must display the other. Okay, I see that. No worries. And in terms, I like the art and also the ability to do like maybe pop up, pop up events as a way to just not be completely desolate.
Sort of following up on, on my, my point earlier, would we be able to, or, I mean, I guess this is all stuff that has to go through the lawyers, but I, I'm wondering if we'd be able to potentially levy a heavier fine on buildings that are not or, or properties that aren't, like, that currently don't have, like, that are condemned or whatever, like, whether that's, like, whether that could be rolled in here. That if you let your property go to a point that it's like, it's not just that you need a tenant, it's like you, it's no longer habitable. That that comes with additional penalties or something like that?
Yeah, that's a great point. That's a really good point. Yeah. Um, Tom, are you done with your thought?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Uh, Tom, um, that's one of the things that, that, um, we had discussed, I believe, at EDIC, which was someone asked a question, were, were there other city departments involved in buildings that had gotten to the point like hurry and scurry? You know, that building is, is a danger to somebody potentially walking by it or, or a heavy wind. I, I would, I would venture a guess that none of us here tonight would want to step foot in the, the red Moriarty building next to Big E's. Over the years with the roof leaking and potential mold and, and rodents and what. So we wondered if, if there were other city departments like health or building commissioner, that do they have tools in their toolbox to take action? I think also the D and D building on the corner of North Hampton Street. You know, that's way beyond the scope of this hundred dollar fine. I agree with you. That, that's like, that's like above our pay grade, I think. And by the way, as Gwynn said, we're volunteers, so.
Right. No, but I think, I think Tom, uh, both Toms, uh, really good point. Um, because I think uh, the health department, I believe the fire department have tools in their toolbox to be able to deal with the issues of condemned buildings and, and, you know, potential hazardous situations. I think on top of that, if we, like, Tom, I like your idea. If we had an, an additional, if your building is condemned and it's on this registry, then there is going to be an additional and annual fee because, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's not, it's a, um, it's blight, you know, dangerous blight. Yeah. So, uh, I like, I like that idea. Let's, I think we should take a look and see if we can, you know, work that in, um, to the, to the fee scale. Uh, I, I think it does make sense. So, um, all right, now, let me see. Gwynn, I see your hand up.
I think you, you probably could even decide that there is some sort of mini rubric. You don't want to have a ton of elements on it, but it's on the registry at all. Okay, strike one. And it is potentially a burden to X number of departments at any given moment, um, or is on the, the horizon or eyeliner, it's in somebody's scopes. Um, if you have, if you're meeting like three of, three of five of those or whatever, you're incurring a greater fee. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Do you think we could, um,
Oh yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Sorry. Uh, do you think we could actually engage with, I mean, I certainly think one thing that this committee has, um, received some feedback from the city about in the past is passing ordinances that, um, require some sort of enforcement component from city officers without, you know,
Checking with them first?
Meeting with those city officers and getting a sense of, of where this would fit into their current workload. I, I mean, for me, this, I think, I, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I, but I, I just think that like, to avoid that, which has been an issue in the past, do you think it might be a good idea for us to invite the building commissioner and potentially a few other people?
Health agent, fire chief. Yeah.
What's that?
Captain Dan and, and, and Bree perhaps.
Yeah, yeah. To, uh, to, to come and, and just sort of give their thoughts on, on all of this. I, I just want to make sure we're getting all the feedback. I think fundamentally, this is a sound idea. I'm just
Yeah.
Trying to make, you know, I, we've had a few ordinances that we've passed that we've then had to bring back a few times because sort of their enforcement mechanism didn't exactly slot in with what the city actually, you know, wanted to do. So I want to make sure we get this right the first time.
Yeah. And so my thought with that was that, um, you know, we would workshop as far, you know, try to workshop this as much as we could. And then once we And then once we had a little bit more cogent idea of, you know, um, the fixes that we wanted to put into this, then bring the, the second level of, you know, building commissioner, health department and, and then coordinate with them, hey, this is what we're thinking. And so we have a little, just a little bit more of a finished product. I mean, not that it's not a finished product, but the stuff that we're thinking about adding to it. Um, so it's, you know, we're not saying, hey, we're thinking of this, but we're like, here's the concrete thing that we'd like to show you. So that's kind of where I was at with that, but, um, but I, I do think that's a really important point. And, and that's definitely on my radar as that's, I've been a part of a couple of those, so.
I did send a draft of this to the building commissioner in late December, early January. So they are, they are at minimum, uh, they have been made aware technically. I don't know that they opened the email, but they know that it's out there potentially. That was a Jeff Baggs suggestion.
Great. Uh, Lindsay, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I wanted to refer back to something that Gwen brought up at the point because she was saying, who is in charge of this relationship building? Cause it's, um, and then you said the building inspector is in charge of enforcement, but that's not really relationship building. That's after it's, after they're in trouble or, so I was, I don't know what point it would be appropriate, maybe in our committee level or, I mean, I'd be happy to draft a letter to the people that are currently a vacant properties that maybe the members of the ordinance committee could sign, asking for their input. We understand they have a vacant property. We like to understand why and just, and, you know, invite them to come to a particular meeting to, to talk about that with us. Um, that we're planning to implement some kind of ordinance and, um, so, you know, just they're, they're warned or they're informed and they're invited to participate.
I, I don't have a problem with that. And, and I think, you know, one of the things I would like to do is, um, and Gwen, I don't know if you or someone else on the committee has a, uh, a Google Doc version of this or Microsoft Word version that I can go through and, and start to edit. Um, because there are a couple of things like, um, just making, you know, um, building inspector is now the building commissioner. Um, there's some, you know, semantical, if that's even a some appropriate statement. Uh, there are some things that need to be just modified a little bit, like not by law, but ordinance, that cut, that type of thing. Um, and, and start just work, getting a working draft where we can start looking at increasing a, a, a fine tier that increases, um, you know, I mean, I think we have section eight, which is unsafe and condemned buildings. We could add a, uh, an additional fine there. Um, it would just be a compounding, um, registration for, for unsafe and condemned buildings. I think that's, that would probably be the best way to do that, which I think would solve that issue. And then once I am able to go through, um, and, you know, get our working document, that's, I think, when we can do those things, to reach out to the health department, fire department. The, uh, we really are definitely going to have to go through the solicitor to make sure that this is all above the board and is gonna, you know, um, be enforceable. Uh, and then, and then I think Lindsay, to your point, um, once we have a working draft that we feel like is a little bit more, um, and, you know, ready to go to the planning board, that's when we reach out because, you know, this is, again, this is a, you know, um, something that we probably want to make sure that we're working closely with Jeff and, and that the planning board knows what's going on with it as well. So, um, that, that's kind of my thought, but I, let me see, I see, it looks like Cassie has hand up.
Yeah, I'm off mute.
Yeah, there you go.
I'd like to suggest that every, every, even though there is a list of people whose properties are vacant, anybody could have a vacant property at any time if the winds flow the right way. And so I would suggest that a letter go out to everybody that's a landlord on, in, in the areas in question. And, and we have that mailing list at the ready.
Oh, great. Okay, that's good to know. And that's, that would be the downtown business.
Is Union Street, Main Street, Cottage Street.
Yep. Okay, uh, Council Peak, I see you have your hand up.
Actually, yeah, that remind, that's what made me think about, uh, another thing, which is what's our, what's going to be our method here for actually? I mean, obviously, if you just walk down, walk through the downtown business district every day, I think you'll, you'll notice when a building becomes vacant. But what's the actual, like, you, assuming that a, a, a landlord or a building owner, um, has a tenant move out? Is there an expectation that they notify? I mean, given that there, like, there's a clock that starts here at some point, like, how does that all work in terms of like, does, do we, are we assuming that the city's going to get some sort of notification? Or, or somehow be aware that, that a, that a unit became vacant?
It's a really good question.
I, I think when, I, I think under the proposed ordinance, we're, and again, this might be a little bit of the honor system out of the beginning, in the beginning, but I think we're expecting business owners to register once they have a building go vacant. Now, if they don't, then it comes back to that enforcement point, which is someone driving by and sees a business has been vacant for two months and realizes they're not on the registry. Um, what's the next step? But I'm hoping that the honest property owner is going to actually follow through on this ordinance and register themselves as a vacant property.
For a little levity, I will delegate this task of identifying vacant buildings to the East Hampton Mass Facebook group. I'm sure they will.
That would be, yeah, be effective. Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Just a couple of other follow-ups.
Sure.
Did you all see the letter that EDIC sent to all of these business owners?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Cause I don't know if Lindsay saw it, cause Lindsay's new to the committee.
Okay, I just want to make sure what Lindsay was recommending isn't just duplicative of what EDIC has already done. Because we sent out a letter, um, pretty, pretty lengthy letter explaining all of this to all of the current property owners in the business district. That went out maybe back in December, Gwen?
Yep. Yep.
I just, I want to say that I agree that, yeah, I don't want to repeat, so I definitely want to see what, what that letter is and maybe it could be more succinct or just attach it and say, we have a meeting on this date where we're going to be discussing it, invite them. But I do want to have a different letter to the people who have vacant storefronts, because I want to acknowledge that they have a vacant storefront. I, I mean, that's part of like the open communication, like, like everybody should get the letter that we're doing this and should be involved. But I would like to write a specific letter to the people who have vacant storefronts, say, we recognize that you have a vacant storefront and we would like to understand why and please come and talk to us about it.
And I also think, you know, the letter that we're talking about potentially later could be, you know, the final draft of what we are planning on bringing to the full council. So there, so it's not just like, hey, we're thinking about doing this. It's more like, this is going to be the law. And you have, you have a property that's going to be affected by it. We want you to know that. So you can have some input, you know, um, I think like for me, that's, that's kind of, um, would be in, uh, the, the notification piece, which is when we have this final draft that we're ready to send to the full council to just let people know that we've gotten that far.
I would just make sure Salem that the city solicitor is okay with that because we, we've been very careful through this process to not single anyone out. And now we're singling out a subset of this group. Uh, we're singling out those who in fact might be the first ones to pay the fine. It's sort of like, we see you, we know who you are, as opposed to the letter we sent out was, was comprehensive to all business owners saying, here's what's coming.
Right.
Well, here's what we're working on kind of thing. The, the, the other piece, Salem, you mentioned real quick about city solicitor. And I'm sure, I'm sure he would figure this out, but, um, when we met with this, with Arlington, they were quick to point out that we're not doing something as a lone wolf here. That we really modeled this after a, a community that has successfully implemented, implemented this for, I'm not sure how many years now. And I, I think Cassie, there's a few in the state, right, that are doing this? So, um, I think that, I think the, the good news is we're not, we're not inventing the wheel here.
Right.
If it would be helpful for me to identify the other towns and cities in Mass, I would be happy to do that.
Okay.
To the extent possible from a Google search.
Sure. If you want to just shoot that email to me, I can share it with the rest of the committee. Um, I, I think that would be helpful. Yeah, and, and Tom, I think, um, you know, as we, as we do move forward, um, I'll, you know, I'll check in with the president of the council to make sure that we have access to our solicitor on this. I, I mean, this, for me, I think this is one of those ones that, um, could be potentially lit- litigated. I know that there's other ones that are, exist, so, but it doesn't stop someone from being like, I don't like this idea, I'm gonna, so, you know, I'm, I, I agree with the, I, you know, and from my perspective, I just want to be as forthcoming with, and, and the, the method that we do it might not be a direct letter to the, um, owners. It could be, you know, just put out, um, uh, in the media, et cetera, et cetera. Just, I just want to make sure that people are aware of what's coming down the line, so they're not blindsided. Uh, and that's going to be important for me.
I think too, Salem, just to show how communities are looking at this, I believe the city of Northampton reached out to Gwen or Cassie, I'm not sure which, and asked if we could share everything we've done so far. And I think, I'll paraphrase, I think Gwen's answer was hell no. We, we did all this work. You go back, you go do your own work. We're not going to just share it with you unless you want to pay royalties for it.
Yeah. Well, once we pass it, they'll steal from us anyway, so that's.
Yeah, there you go.
One of the first time.
There you go.
All right, I see, um, I, Dee?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, uh, is it okay for me to ask a question? I'm visiting this.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And you know what? I probably should have said this before and, and everybody, I think, um, Lindsay, you, um, can see people's names on the thing, but let's, for the, for, just for the record, we should say our names and address for, you know, for, uh, minutes and whatnot. That's my bad for not saying that earlier.
Uh, my name is Donna Chappalo and I'm kind of new in East Hampton. Um, so, but my question was, i- is there a way to connect people? Like, is there, like, how would I know if I want, if I was looking for a place to conduct a business, how would I know who these empty storefronts belong to, to be able to contact those people?
Gwen, you want to take that one?
Really great question. And that's why we like this idea of having a registry, because that registry serves both as a way of saying, hey, over here, look at me, I have a vacant storefront. You should check on me in three months and see if I've got a new tenant. And also someone like you, Donna, who is looking for a space. So in an ideal world, we have, we have this registry set up, so it could demonstrate to you, um, maybe some of its useful features and maybe its square footage, what it was previously used for, and that might give you a sense of like, if I like this space, what might it take for me to turn it into the space that I need?
I think that's a great point, Gwen, as far as the, the value of this. And I think that one of the things that, um, as a council that we would push for is to have this registry available online as part of the easthampton.gov website. So it would be searchable and it would be, uh, you know, easily accessible from the main page. So if you were looking for something, it would be a, a way to, almost like a clearinghouse, you know? Um, and a way to keep people accountable. So, um, I, I think that that is one of the, the really, you know, the bright spots of this ordinance, um, and the potential use for it. Cassie, I see your hand again.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I've already used it for that purpose. Friend reached out, hey, what do you know about vacant storefronts? I'm looking to rent. It's like, well, I just happened to have this Excel spreadsheet. Don't tell anyone I sent it to you. Um, so yeah, we're already using it. That's really cool.
That's great. That's great. So, uh, now who would I ask for the, the word or Google Doc version of this?
I got it. I'll send it to you.
Awesome. Thanks, Gwen. Um, and I think that probably what we can do is, um, you know, I'll go through, make a red line. Um, and, and, uh, Tom and Lindsay, would you have any problem with me creating a tiered, uh, fine, a, a tiered registration fee and just doing it like a simple, like, 100 for the first, maybe 300 for the second and, um, you know, 500 for the third or something like, somewhere in that neighborhood?
Yeah. No, I'm going to send you the Cambridge report and they can sort of, they did a whole report while they were, and, um, it has different examples of tiered. So I'll send it to you right now.
Perfect. And so what I'll do is I can, I'll, I'll do a red line version with a, a sample. And I can, maybe I'll even put in a couple of different options. Um, and, um, what I would do is I would put in, um, and, and, uh, I guess in the, an add-on registration fee for vacant or, I mean, not vacant, but abandoned or condemned buildings.
Yeah, that was all I was going to say is that, I, I, if you have like a schedule and then have like a separate schedule for condemned buildings or something like that.
Yep, perfect. And then, so once we get that red line, um, and, and I'll try to do this quick. Uh, uh, I think I don't want, I don't want to sit on this for too long and I want to respect the work the EDIC did on this, which we appreciate. Um, and so, um, I, I think that what we could potentially look at is having the red line. Let me get my phone here. The red line document ready to talk about again, um, maybe towards the end of the month. Um, and that way we can have like a, you know, a, a really clear direction, um, that we could send to the solicitor, that we could get the impact, input from the health, fire, DPW, um, and, and start moving this forward. Does that, does that sound like, uh, acceptable to the folks in the room?
Sounds great.
Awesome. Tom, do you have another question?
Just real quick, um, depends on, we'd have to look at the wording you're going to use when it comes to condemned, because I'm not even sure the hurry and scurry is condemned. I'm pretty confident that the Moriarty building is not. So I'm not sure how to get them into, a building can go a long time before it gets condemned. So I'm not sure what the language should be there to, to identify those types of properties.
So what I'll do is I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll defer to section eight, which is the unsafe and condemned building section of the, um, proposed ordinance. Um, and I, I will, I know that, um, there, it basically meant, it makes mention of an MGL, but not which one. So I'll dig in and find out which MGL we would use to kind of determine that, which I'm sure there are criteria that are, are, you know, pretty spelled out. And, uh, we'll go from there. I, I think, but I think that's the right place to, to have it, is in the section eight, unsafe and condemned buildings.
Great.
Cool. Uh, any other thoughts? Okay.
It's very exciting.
Yes. Very exciting. Yes. And like I said, I'm gonna, um, so, you know, we, we have a bunch of stuff on our docket anyway, but, you know, I feel like this one is, is one that I would, I would like to continue working on. So we have, um, the continued public hearing on the eighth, so that's next week. Um, I, I think, um, you know, we need to start looking at the, the other piece of our, the other, our new business, that's going to be important for us as well. So I'm thinking maybe the, the week of the 22nd, we'll do that, if it's okay with my, my folks here, with Tom and Lindsay. Um, do you want to look at maybe Tuesday, the 22nd, we'll look at the new business of the, um, the mayor's, uh, executive assistant? Is that, is that, might work for you guys, Tuesday, the 22nd at six?
Yep.
Yeah, that should be, I mean, yeah.
Okay. Um, and, uh, then what that means, hold on, I had this at 6:30, so I gotta change that. Hold on one second. That means maybe the following week, which is the last week of March, maybe the 29th of March, we can reconvene on this. Does that sound like something doable for Tom and Lindsay? The 29th of, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, um, so I'm going to put that in for this and then, um, by then I'll have a red line with those, uh, um, you know, the, the scale of fees. And I think we can bring any other questions or comments. Let's, let's use that meeting to, to push this one into a place where we feel comfortable, where we can bring in the other folks. Sound good?
Those meetings are both at 6:00 PM?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yep, not 6:30. Uh, Cassie, you have a question?
No question. I just want to say, go edic. I want to go out and get some t-shirts for us. Yay. That's all.
Nice. Well, we appreciate the, the, you know, extensive work that you guys did on this. And, and, you know, it's, um, I think it could potentially have a really beneficial, uh, impact on the city. So, uh, you know, I, I, we appreciate that. So.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And unless anybody else has anything, um, I would have, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. So let's go through the roll call. Council Peak?
Hi.
Council Rothschild?
Yes.
And I vote yes too. Thanks, everybody for coming. Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.